Good morning, everyone. I'd like to invite you here today to the Daxton County Board of Supervisors for Tuesday, May second of two thousand and twenty-three. And Don Schwenker, Louie Lego, myself, Mike Steinis are your county supervisors. Lisa is our county auditor, Bjorn, the IT director, Luanne, our executive assistant is here. And first on our agenda today is Todd Genie, our county engineer. Good morning. All right, checked out your work in progress a couple of times.
Getting there, isn't it?
Yeah.
Something about needing rain now. Need a little moisture would help. So first items here, three different driveways. The first one, John Housefettler. Side distance fine, everything checks out, so I would just recommend approval.
Motion second to approve the entrance for John Housefettler as presented. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed nay, motion carried.
Okay, the next one for Stacy Lang is actually was a farm entrance that were that they're now one of nine one one address for. So it's an existing driveway. Now we're permitting it as a residential driveway, so everything checks out. So it's actually an existing right away that we're re permitting as residential, so.
Motion second to approve Stacy Lane residential permit as presented. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed nay, motion carried.
Okay, I would probably butcher this name. So next one is Andre Di Acquisto. This one had a little bit, didn't quite meet the side distance checks. It was just under five hundred, so this one I recommend approval, but we were gonna need to install the hidden driveway signs that we would install typically for.
So it's just the farm entrance to the yard.
I see farm entrance, so I recommend approval with the the hidden driveway signs.
Motion second to approve Andres Farm entrance as presented with the hidden driveway sign noted. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed nay, motion carried.
All right. We have two windscreen permits for utility installation. They're both gonna be, the one on Sebring Ridge Road is gonna be plowed in. You know, typically plow these in at the edge of the right away or toe of the force slope, I guess along Sebring. There's quite a bit of rock, shallow rocks, so we'll probably have to, I don't know how they're gonna get it sawed in maybe, but I mean, I recommend approval.
Are we approving them both or just the one on Sebring?
I'll start with the one, well, the one on Sebring I just talked about. The other one, what's the first one on your agenda? We can talk about that first. That one is just a short little strip eighteen hundred feet and then across in fifty-two, boring fifty-two, same thing, we plowed it in. At the right away line or the toe of the force slope, which would refer the right away line, but if we can't there to fill with the force slope. So I'd recommend approval of that one. That's the one. The first one listed on the agenda. I'll make a motion to approve both.
Have a motion in a second to approve two windstream permit for Washington Township is the first one. And then Bellevue Town fifth as presented. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Aye, opposed nay, motion carried.
Okay, so the next item on your agenda is the request from Sandy. For the memorial sign installation. Levi, sent you the response from the county attorney way back when. Basically recommended that we don't allow type of sign installation just because of the liability that the county would potentially take on for having another sign or obstruction in the right way. So we got a formal request to do this. I asked Stacy to put it on the board's agenda so we could take action via motion to either approve or deny the request, so.
We, I mean, we've discussed it a little bit. I did talk to Ms. Compass and indicated that our attorney does not really like the idea for liability reasons as far as that goes. And I think, you know, she was probably okay with it, understood that where we're coming from. Um, so.
I know that we were, we talked about having them check to see if they could put it on the other side of the fence line, right?
I I talked to her about that. She's gonna talk to the property owner yet.
She said that maybe she made it just a little bit taller.
Yeah, and we talked, we discussed all that.
Okay, motions of the night.
Yeah, I would second that.
I have a motion and a second to deny the most memorial sign as requested. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed nay, motion carried. With that conversation I had, she would like me to ask you about putting up a some type of barricade or railing there, so. And and I don't know what the parameters are for such a thing, you know, so they don't go down all the way down, but I I said, well, we, I talk, they don't ask you about it, see what you thought.
Guard rail?
Yes.
You hit that at the end of the T and flipped off.
Well, and I, that's what I was thinking too, is is what's, I mean, of course, speed comes into play, of course. But, you know, on every T intersection, we don't have a guard rail.
No, and so the function of guard rail is to realign a car that's tangentially striking it. Like it's supposed to give, give and then direct you back into the road where you're supposed to be. Guard rail isn't typically meant to be hit straight on. That's not its function. It's meant to be, it's meant to be longitudinal to the path it's protecting, not perpendicular. I think we can look at it, but for the most part, guard rail is meant to protect a side hazard and not a straight on hazard like that, so.
Uh, so potentially it could be more. More than.
Yeah, you're really for guard rail, you're really only protecting those cars that would be driving the other leg of the T, not the T coming down to the stop. I mean, we put the rubble strips in, the rubble stops, we got the flashing sign, I think. I mean, at some point, you know, you can only correct driver error so much.
Yep, I said I would ask.
Uh, next item is the the assistant to the engineer position. We did our interview. That went well. Recommended a motion to hire Thomas Hughes to that position. He worked about, I think it was like like about nine or ten years for the DOT, doing project inspection work, just like what he would be doing quite a bit of here, so he had a pretty decent amount of experience. The mood.
I'll second that.
No motion in a second to hire the assistant to the engineer position to the individuals stated.
Effective when?
Uh, I believe it is May twenty-second.
Okay. Effective May twenty-second. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed nay, motion carried.
Okay, next is twenty eighty agreement with the city of McCooka. And this is for the street lighting along South Main Street. The part that's actually in the county's jurisdiction. They're proposing their quotes in to do, put in twelve lights. Six of those basically would be what I would call the county's jurisdiction. And the other ones would be the cities, and then we were gonna buy one additional pole to have in stock in case there's damage, we can get a pole replacing it instead of waiting for delivery of a new pole and have missing that light for an extended period of time, so. Their spacing is a hundred seventy-five foot. It's a little, little closer spacing, I believe, than what's on the rest of that route, but that's basically what they was recommended to the spacing along that route through the New Bridge Project, so. We would, it's, there are lights to maintain and pay the energy bill and stuff for, so. I think.
Where are they gonna sit? I mean, cause we're talking from the bridge up to Walmart intersect McKenzie Drive.
Yes, so it'll be starting north of the bridge all the way south up to.
When you get right there by the FS building, that's kinda, there's that walking path or bike path, and then it's kind of a steep where these poles are gonna go.
They're gonna go on the east side of the road.
Yeah, that's where that.
Yeah.
Slope is, so they're gonna be right on the property line, or they're gonna be right along the trail or because you still have that ditch drainage.
Yeah.
That ain't very big through.
I'm gonna guess they're gonna be on the back slope of the of the right of way line. So not, not between the traveled way and the trail, but from the trail to the right of way line.
Yeah.
So I could check into that, but I kinda left that up to the city.
So bless you. So is part of, it's all south of that bridge. Am I wrong or am I right there that part of that was, is that city though, that city property, right? Just so we own part of that.
So it's all jacked, jagged, but you had it right, yeah. It it's county, then it goes back to cities if I go the farther south. Really what the city should, I mean, shouldn't really, should annex all that, but uh, uh, there's a, there's a.
Well, I think the reason why is.
All game we have, is there something to do with Rainville? I have no idea. It was like, we went through this, we, I got into this with Mike Clausen. We were looking at this when the bridge, when we were doing the twenty eighty agreement for the bridge. Does it some percentage of of right away that's ours versus theirs, because it's actually, you know, it it actually is like a skewed section that we take, it's not quite half, it's close to half. And then depending on where you add on the south side of the bridge and the north side of the bridge, it's different, so it's a it's kind of convoluted, but.
So we are still putting poles in the city limits then, correct? Is that what you're telling me?
The city's putting the poles on the city jurisdiction, the six poles that we are paying for are going into county jurisdiction.
Okay.
Basically, like that first house south of the bridge, I think is in Rainville. It's a little unincorporated and then at.
And we're pulling, and we're paying the utilities on all of them?
No, our six.
Just the six, and there's gonna be a meter there or what?
So I'm gonna guess, uh, we can either have it metered or we would pay a percentage of the twelve poles that get installed, I guess. My guess is we will pay the city and the city will pay the, but we're paying our, the cost for those six poles would be billed to us. Whatever that, if it's a per se or a pro rated amount of that bill, we would be paying our part.
With this extra pole being stored in the neighborhood, you're starting to pay.
It's gonna be with the city. Yeah. You got the bridge, you got the corporation limit line. There. Where are they?
Good question.
It's purple, you can see a purple line in the middle there, Owen.
Oh, yeah, okay. It is hard to see.
The ones with the blue.
It's hard to see, but. Yeah, so scroll, bring the north more into view. Okay, so there's, there's where it is, and this is actually part of it, and then it jogs back over, so this section here is basically a county. Till you get, scroll up a little bit, and then now it becomes city here again, I believe. Yeah, so it's pretty chopped up.
Just past the FS there, whatever.
Yeah, I don't know why that, it's not city all the way over to wherever this west line is, would make more sense, but.
Well, yeah, I mean, we, we discussed that, well, that part of that sixty-five percent, thirty-five, sixty-five, thirty-five percent, something like that of the bridge that we discussed so many times, but.
So we're, we're paying for lights on our jurisdiction, our right away.
Okay, and and you, you for pretty much say, think this is the proper.
The spacing I will, it's fine, I mean, I, it needs to be, to my mind, it just needs to be uniform through there, so you don't have you know, five hundred feet in one spot, a hundred seventy-five in another, so.
Right now, so the poles kinda stagger back and forth across the road. Is this gonna put, is the city gonna put poles on their side directly over the trail?
It will be the same all the way through this section.
Now, it's like you say, about halfway down that road, kinda where that north incorporation line is. I think there's poles on the west side of the road.
Yeah, I can't, I can't say what the city's gonna do, but like, and these twelve poles will be on the same side of the road for trail lighting.
We can ask them like, no?
Yeah.
Yeah. So I guess the question is, if the county doesn't want to put up lights, we don't have to do this. But if you wanna do it, this is the twenty eighty to do it, yeah.
Well, I think it's inevitable. If they're gonna put lights, we need some, some lighting on that walking trail more now.
Well, our part is technically over the bridge, and that's the main reason that they want lights there is to illuminate the bridge, which the other day I saw somebody walking down the, the west side of the road. I was just, still using the trailer.
But yeah, so the big, the big question is, is does the city's gonna put lights up? Does the county wanna put lights up on our section? If yes, then this is the twenty eighty to do it. Yeah, uh, so the total cost for the twelve lights is fifty-two thousand, one thirty-seven and eighty-seven cents. The additional light for in stock would be another fifteen hundred dollar, fif- one thousand five hundred, fourteen dollars and sixty cents. And then the county's portion, we're gonna pay half of that fifteen hundred, and then our half of the lights is twenty-six thousand, sixty-eight dollars and ninety-four cents.
So. They're putting twelve lights in?
There's twelve lights total, we're doing six, they're.
Twelve lights per fifty-two thousand dollars.
Yes.
That's over four thousand dollars a pole.
The fifteen hundred is just to buy the, buy the pole, have it stocked, so you're talking another twenty-five hundred to install per pole. And then run the electric, the line, the power and everything else. So the fifteen hundred dollars is just to buy the material to have a pole sitting in stock in case one gets hit, blown over, whatever, you know.
There's another question, you know, are they gonna be like these black lights out here? Are they gonna be? Cause they don't illuminate. Well, I don't believe.
The poles are galvanized.
I drive, I drive by street every morning, I think they work fine.
Well, they're.
The biggest problem they have is they're, they're LED and most of them are the sodium, whatever. I forget the, and they're called streetlights, they're supposed to be on the street, they're not supposed to be a yard light, they're not supposed to illuminate everybody's houses around them.
Well, I get that, but I don't.
Yeah, I don't know exactly what they, what's the last arm and what the lumen, the luminary is gonna be, but I'm assuming it's gonna be similar to what the city has in other streetlight. Cause really, we don't, the county doesn't have streetlights, right? So a standard, we're just we're agreeing to be part of.
My question to the city would be when they took down the streetlights that were downtown. I know they got one hundred and three hundred lumen lights, the LED lights. When we did Main Street, we took a bunch of those three hundred lumen lights down, they're the same, if you go on East Summit. If you drive on there, that, those are three hundred lumen lights. We put them on Western too, they have extra. So are they, are they using those? Because they have some of those lights are just around. I don't think they got them up, so.
That would be a question for the city. I, I don't know that answer.
So are we, do we need to have more discussion with the city? Do you think?
I think they're gonna be here at ten thirty, so these are things that.
So we can table this action, is that something that's time sensitive here?
Uh, I don't know, it would just be a matter of getting the lights ordered, probably. Uh, you, you can table it, doesn't matter to me, um, it's just.
I don't think MMU is waiting to do that. I mean, they're not waiting on this.
Yeah, go ahead and table it, and then we can, you can get more information about the, you know, the mast arm length, the luminaries, the type of the light, type of the pole, if you want, that's fine.
Well, it needs to be uniform.
Well, that's why we're doing it together, so all the poles are the same. It's all uniform across the, at least on this section of the road. I don't know if they're gonna be the same as what's on, say, Platte or what, I don't know, I don't know that. I'm guessing.
Well, Platte Street lights are gonna be, I'm talking, these will probably look like the ones on I, I don't think they'd be trying to do the historic looking old pole allowing that stretch.
Well, are you talking about the, the fixture or the pole?
Both.
Well, the poles could be different because the, where the light where the light has to be dispersed from.
Those poles.
On this will probably have to be taller because the road is much higher than the trail, you know, where the, the poles will be placed. So I'm guessing these poles will have to be taller than what you'd have like on a side street residential.
But I'm looking at, these poles are gonna be similar to the one on East Summit. And if you've been on East Summit, those are actually on the south side of the road, and they illuminate the trail on the north side. They do a wonderful job. Those are the three hundred lumen or three hundred watt, the LED lights. And, uh, or not lumen watts, whatever they are, but I'm assuming it's gonna be like that. Yeah, I, I, then I would just table it.
Or approve this after we talk to them later.
I, I, I think we could just leave it on our agenda for the next, we can have some discussion and.
Didn't you make a motion?
No, not yet.
And I'll, I'll.
I have a motion by you and second by Nan to approve the twenty eighty agreement.
I, I didn't hear that.
You pre-wrote your notes, aren't you?
No, I. Well, I guess you can officially resend your motion.
I didn't hear.
Put the tape back, can you rewind your? I motioned the table and put it on next week's agenda. So we can have further talks with the city.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to table the twenty eighty agreement as presented. For further discussion, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed nay, motion carried.
Okay, and then two things here, uh, uh, just in general, uh, next Tuesday, I won't be here. I gotta be in Washington County, I gotta present an award to their county engineer from NACE. Their board meets on Tuesday too, so I'll be doing that. But, and then the other update on the three hundred and eighth, uh, the street, the second day road assessment. Jay's got the cost assessment done, I'm gonna go over that with him today. I have a draft report recreated. So once I get the report finalized, the next step will be I will submit that report to the board, okay? And then we will have to schedule a public hearing where that that report, the proposed assessment to the, to the lots in there, we'll have to send out notice to all the landowners, property owners. And then that'll be the first step of having a hearing that's required by code. And then, uh, once that's done, uh, the board basically would need to take action on the proposed establishing the opposed secondary road assessment district. So that is the time when you're gonna say, yes, we approve it, and then we move forward, which we'll have to get the order and the treasurer involved, because how that works is, um, uh, I think it, it's over, test my memory, I think if it's over it's over five hundred or a thousand dollars, they have, they can opt to have the cost of that uh, to pay back over ten equal installments over each year, ten annual equal installments. And then, but the other thing is, is you don't, if the board doesn't like the fifty-fifty cost split, then, uh, from what I understand, the step would be is you could deny the secondary road assessment based on a fifty-fifty cost assessment. And you could basically have discussions with that group to say, hey, you know, we would consider whatever costs, seventy-five, twenty-five, or whatever, that's the time um, you could deny it and ask them to come back with something different as far as the uh, more contribution from the property owners, or you can say you can approve it and then we move forward at fifty-fifty, so.
So do we have to go through this first process if we're not, um, we're not agreeable to the fifty-fifty, cause I don't know if we ever talked about a percentage.
Yeah, so you, I have to do a report by code, I present the report, you have a public hearing. After the hearing over, you close the hearing, you take action on the petition.
So will we get more final numbers on what it would cost to do this?
In the final report will be the estimated cost.
Okay. And where, how you would estimatedly fund it? Because I'm assuming right now that's not in any of your road plans.
So I'm not super familiar with this process, but I believe what hap- what can happen is they issue warrants for it from the treasurer's office. And the county fronts the money, does the project. And then we get reimbursed from the property owners over, say they opt for the ten year uh, payback, and then you have to also assign interest that they're gonna pay on those warrants. So I'll have to work with the, I mean, that we I've never done one of these. I've done a secondary road assessment report, but it got voted down, so we never had to go through the financial part of it, the payback part. I also believe there's the option where it can be paid out of secondary road fund. Uh, but the same thing, we have to get reimbursed plus interest that gets established by the board when they approve the district. So I think there's two different funding mechanisms. I would prefer that it not come through secondary roads. Uh, that it just be done through the treasurer's office, but, uh, it's gonna take some uh, figuring out, if you will, a lot of financial piece gets done. Uh, right now, obviously it's not budgeted for, my budget doesn't have it, so if, if it's gonna be paid out of the secondary road fund, then obviously we would have to do a budget amendment, and then there's a whole other discussion of if, if you approve the secondary road assessment district. I would have to add this to the five-year program, because now we're paving a road that we didn't have on the program. So we'd have to do a budget amendment potentially, and also a five-year program amendment. Or we wait until next year to do it, and I put it on the five-year program when we do the program in March of next year to do in twenty-five.
I was gonna say, is there a time limit when we, if we say, yeah, okay, we'll do it at whatever split, is there a time limit? How fast do they need to do the road? Cause if we're looking at three or four hundred thousand dollars, I don't know of a budget that we got for a pot of money that we got where we could just cough up three or four hundred thousand dollars and say, ooh, we get paid back in ten years.
Yeah, so, you know, what we had talked about, I believe when the group was in here is that if we were gonna do it, we may be able to put, say, the McAdam Stone down this year, late fall, and at least get the aggregate layers built. And then let it settle, I would prefer to let it settle all winter, come back in the spring, and then potentially uh, put down a little more chokes over, just make sure we got a, a good cover stone over it, and then we chip seal it. And then probably let that cure out for a few weeks, and then we come back and put the asphalt down. So we could split it up over two budgets, and that basically is what I'm saying, and we could put the aggregate down without doing a budget amendment. Or excuse me, adding it to the five-year program, because that is considered maintenance work. Me placing more aggregate on the road is maintenance. Me taking an aggregate road to a paved road, that's new construction, that has to be in the five-year program. So we could do the aggregate part without doing the five-year road amendment or five-year program amendment, but potentially budget-wise, we're gonna be potentially over budget, which isn't that big a deal.
Well, first we need a cost, you know, so then we can decide where, if it's even feasible, for one thing. And if we can't get it into two budgets. Or, I mean, this road was scheduled for your restructure this year, so I'm, I'm guessing that. Yeah, so I'm guessing that's gonna happen anyway, correct?
That's the intent, is that, uh, we were gonna do it anyway. Now, if we were gonna, if you say, yes, we're gonna do this, we're gonna improve it, then I probably maybe wouldn't do it, because, uh, we're gonna be hauling a bunch of more aggregate in there anyway, so I would probably just hold off and do that in the fall.
Because this is such a short section, and you still have to do the rest of the road.
It's three quarters of a mile, right?
Yeah, roughly.
Cause it could, when I drove it, it looked like there was at about a quarter of a mile.
It's like.
It's a quarter, a third.
It's like three thousand feet.
Yeah.
So it's just to that.
There was like. It starts just before that big culvert, stops just before that big culvert.
It's just best, it's just best, not much better.
Yeah, I, I, I remember, it's like three thousand.
Cause it was like, I, I could see there was like two culverts that went underneath the road. The first one, there was a, a smaller one, and then there was a bigger one, right, where there's like a house on the side, and they got some construction stuff on the, on the right side. And it looks.
Yeah, I think what you're thinking about the three courses a mile is if we went all the way out to the last property before it went to like the level B, that was like three quarters of a mile, but to get just the first section that grabs most of the houses, I think it was like three thousand feet. So we'd stop just at this culvert there.
Yeah, there he is. You take measures up on top there if you want him now.
There you go.
There.
Miles, that's fine.
One from fifty-two.
Yeah. That's gonna be showed as a little extra, but keep going, keep going, keep going. Okay, can flash the point? No, uh, uh, no, you're right, just past that driveway. What you got? What you got? Oh, that's like.
Yeah, it's only.
Sixteen hundred feet.
Fourteen. Fourteen hundred feet, yeah, I thought it was only like.
Oh, you don't have a bounce, that's right, uh. So yeah, uh, maybe three thousand feet was the whole thing, maybe I was.
But yeah, it's, oh, there's another, that one you can barely see, if you go farther out, there's another bigger culvert where it looks like. The residential area ends, and then it becomes really.
That's a big culvert.
That is a big.
That's a big one. Yeah, or just, if you drive through it on the road, it don't look that.
Uh, but that's the, that's the part of the petition, that's what.
Before that, cuz they don't wanna replace the pay for that. That's why they were stopping before that.
Yeah, but that is the petition right there, that's what they're proposing to be part of this.
And so the twenty one property owners, they said, were going to pay for this, go up that side.
Yep, there's six up on this side, the sum up on top, and then yeah, it goes all the way back up.
Okay. It's cuz, so I understand this. Because they had two people that were against it, and one person they never got a hold of. Well, them people, if this would go through, they're just. A S O L and they have to pay it no matter what.
That's correct. It would be assessed to them even though they're against the project.
Okay, well, we need more information.
Like I said, as I referenced before, the final report will come to you, and then we will schedule a hearing. Uh, one last thing, I don't know if you guys are probably aware, but I'm just gonna run down quick through the road closures we have to date. Because of the Mississippi River flooding, uh, Green Island Road between the Redwood Tracks, it's closed. Uh, five hundred first Avenue, north of Green Island Road. One hundred and forty third Street, from fifty two, east of four hundred and eighty ninth Avenue. And four hundred and eighth, four hundred and eighty ninth Avenue from Green Island Road, north to one hundred and forty third Street. And then there's two other sections, uh, four hundred and forty second Avenue, north of one hundred and forty, or four hundred and thirteenth Avenue to Dead End Road. And then six hundred, six hundred and second Avenue, uh, north of six oh seven by by Sebula, so that's farther down. Fifty two that's close to, so a bunch by Green Island, one north of Green Island, one south of Green Island, so. Sounds like it'll be closed for a while yet.
Yeah, I was down there yesterday, and it's quite an ordeal.
Okay, anything else? Uh, road retrieval work, you guys have probably maybe checked it out, but uh. We got about one point three miles done per day last week, which isn't too bad. Uh, they should be finishing up, uh, hot fish, probably hopefully today or tomorrow, starting on thirteenth. Um, and then hopefully finishing up thirteenth and a short little other section, we're gonna do, so. Hopefully, we'll get done with District Six, maintainer area, uh, next week, and then start into Baldwin, so. Um. We can get a mile and a third, a mile and a half done per day, uh, we should be in decent shape to hopefully finish by the end of September.
That. Standards that you have, are, is that compared to Cook County, or how do you compare that?
Uh, I I would say it's, it's it's slower for two reasons, one, um. We're dealing with more material here because of the lips in the width of some of the roads. And we're hauling six hundred ton per mile, where Platte County, we'd be hauling only four hundred ton per mile. So the scope of the work is a little different, but once, once we get every road hit in Jackson County, and we come back. So there's probably being three or four years, we come back and start doing these roads. A second time, it should be much quicker, because we should be dealing with less material, and only have to haul four hundred ton per mile. So we should be getting, you know, a couple, two, two and a half miles a day done, so.
I had somebody express concern, farmer, evidently he drives a lot of large equipment, when he heard that we were going to be retrieving the road, he's like, are you leaving the width? The same, or what is the standard width that you try to achieve in a gravel road, cuz he's concerned that if we. They thought we're gonna dig the ditches out and and.
Yeah, so that was a common misconception is. We're not going out with excavators and digging into the road and narrowing the road. The retrieval thing, i- if you you've seen it, you're just disking what's there and pulling it onto the road, so what we retrieve. Is still rolled shoulder, I mean, it's still, the width is, hasn't really changed, where the roads are super wide, we're gonna retrieve out at. Uh, a distance that gives us a road top around twenty eight feet wide, okay? So like, if the road's thirty five feet or wide, we're gonna retrieve in that gives us a rock area that's say twenty six to twenty eight foot wide. And then you'll have the three or four foot shoulders that get cut down with the retriever, so. We're not, like I said, we're not going out in this solar retrieval and rerouting program.
And I explained that to him, but I just kinda wanna get that out there, cuz there's some concern that.
So some of these roads, though, that are thirty five foot wide and flat.
They're gonna seem a lot narrower.
They're gonna seem narrower, because they're gonna have the crown, and that extra five foot or six foot are gonna be. Really be sloping off to.
Yeah.
Drain your water away.
So we're, we're, again, we're shooting for the four to six percent crown on the aggregate part of the road, the driving surface, and then the shoulders, we want to be like. Double that, so eight to twelve percent, so the shoulders should be steeper than the rest of the road, so that's the big part that I think. Or, right now, with some of the finished product. You know, the the crown of the road is like the same all the way out to the inflection point with the with the force, which is not what we want. We want the shoulders to be steeper, so there should be a visual change between the road crown and the shoulder crown. There should be, you should be able to visually tell the difference, so.
Excess amount of material, but I guess that's what it takes.
You mean material is part of your rock?
Yeah.
Yeah. So it will take, I was, it'll take at least a couple months, probably for that amount of rock to get worked in and netted down and compacted. Take at least a couple bladings, hopefully a little bit of moisture, uh, so they're gonna ride rough. For a a good period of time, at least, probably a couple months, till it gets a couple bladings and some moisture and traffic, and then. It should ride very similar to what it was before, except you're gonna have crown in the road.
What's that?
Two percent.
But what's wise?
Eleven foot lanes typically, so twenty two foot.
Or twenty six to twenty eight should be.
Yeah, it's more than what you'd have.
Okay, thanks, Todd.
Alright, thank you much.
So do we have uh, visitors or citizens that are here would like to address the board?
I guess that's me, right?
Like to address the board? Young lady, are you in here?
No, I'm good.
Okay. I did. Well, so Kelly is here from the Jackson County Economic Alliance, and she just wanted to make a brief announcement.
Just a brief announcement, hey, the E O C, we've been working on for two years, here we, um, I think all of you received. My emails and texts and happy dances. Jubilation, yay, um, I did meet with Lynn. Meeting her after, I was at the Bovis State Council meeting last night, so we talked a little bit about. Us getting together to start to get things ordered and get some timelines, and then work with Lisa. As far as making sure we're following the county procurement policy, and. Um, I think this is new to all of us, as far as administering it, but um, I'm willing to help however I can, I am a numbers geek. So I can track invoices and. Basically, I'll do whatever Lisa wants me to do, and if she doesn't want me to do anything, that's fine, and if she wants, whatever she wants me to do, I'll do, so.
Well, appreciate all the work and the time and the effort that we've got into, we know it was stressful at times, um, over and over again, so. We appreciate that, I know there in the, some of the equipment or some of the quotes that I read that you sent us. There was some wiring also involved, so maybe Bjorn will have to also be involved in some of the extra wiring for that room.
So is this a.
Communication.
Reimbursement type of grant where we. incur the cost of, turn the receipts and stuff to get reimbursed back?
Yeah, and there's a match to it too, but I think that Lennon said through his funding. That he would be able to cover, through his existing balances, he would be able to cover.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it, good news, thank you. All right, I will have uh, Hawkeye Area Community Action Agency, HACAP, better known as. Good morning. Would you like to introduce yourself?
Yeah, you bet, I am Whitney Sanger, I am the Dubuque County Outreach Director and Communications Director for the Hawkeye Area Community Action Program. That started my new role yesterday, so. Very excited to be here. Um, twenty twenty three marks the fifty ninth year since Community Action Network was established, I think many of you may know. Community Action as Operation New View. Um, most recently in the past couple of years, the Hawkeye Area Community Action Program took over that organization. So we have over sixteen community action agencies in Iowa. And a thousand total across the country that are working daily to create opportunities. And transform the lives of our neighbors, and making communities stronger, and helping families across the US thrive. This year alone, HACAP served over seventy five thousand individuals, and throughout community action agencies, we served fifteen million. Here in Jackson County, we serve um, many different organizations. That help with food, heat, childcare, which is head start. Um, and long term solutions like education and job placement, we also work a lot with veterans in the community. In total, we served DeBeton, Dubuque, Delaware, Iowa, Jackson, Johnson, Jones, Lynn, and Washington. So all nine counties. So this month, um, as community action agencies represent ninety nine percent of all American counties. We just want to celebrate community action and the impact that it has right here in our county.
So the proclamation for community action, um. I would probably like to read that, if that's okay, or do you want to read it?
It'd be great, you could. I can't, you tell me to, but I can't state your name that I.
Okay, well, I I will, I will, I do that, uh, whereas, community action has. Made essential contributions to individuals and families across this nation by creating economic opportunities and strengthening. Communities, and whereas, community action is a robust state and local force. Connecting people to life-changing services and creating pathways to prosperity in ninety nine percent of all American. Counties, and whereas, community action builds the, and promotes economic stability. As an essential aspect of enabling and enhancing stronger communities and stable homes. And whereas, community action promotes community-wide solutions to challenges. Throughout our cities, suburbs, and rural areas, and whereas, community action delivers innovative services. And supports that create greater opportunities for families and children to succeed, and whereas. Community action insists on community participation and involvement, ensuring that all sectors of the community have a voice and will be heard. And whereas, community action is celebrating fifty eight years of innovation, impact, and providing proven results for Americans. Now and therefore, I, Mike Stein, as chairman of the Jackson County Board of Supervisors of Jackson County, Iowa. Do hereby proclaim May twenty twenty three as Community Action Month in recognition of the hard work and dedication. Of all community action agencies. And witness thereof, I hear, hear undue to subscribe my name to the affix on this second day of May twenty twenty three.
Thank you very much.
And you have the original, or? It says, action. So I would guess. I have a motion and a second to approve the proclamation for Historic Preservation Month, all of the favors say aye. That is the wrong one, so let's start over, I have the motion, I have the motion and the second, uh, for the proclamation. For Community Action Month of twenty twenty three. All those in favor say aye. Close nay? Motion carry.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, Whitney. So, Jeremy, we don't wanna hold you up here, is somebody else in dire need of time constraint here? We got behind a little bit, you wanna give us?
I won't take up much of your time, I just wanted to give you guys a quick update, so, um. They're looking at finishing the precast setting. Today, maybe tomorrow, depends on the wind this afternoon, they started setting yesterday morning, they got one panel up, and then had to stop the wind. But they switched gears and welded all day, which needs time too. So, um, we've got that, uh, I've got, uh, Rock River, uh, electric out there putting conduit in the ground. Um, so looking at getting some uh, concrete poured in the next week, week and a half, as soon as Doug gets his conduit in. Uh, we're gonna start on the the east side and work our way around, so. Like to get some concrete in pretty quick, so we can get some masons out there, start getting some block walls up, and uh, forming up the mezzanine. Um, I've got the bulletproof sheathing being delivered today at eleven o'clock. Um, got offload data, and then I've got the sand oil separator tank coming at one this afternoon, so we're getting. Good material on site, um, we've got all the retention door frames, uh, window frames, slabs. Everything's good, poised, ready to go, so we'll get some concrete down, start setting some door frames and. Um, trying to maintain a pretty aggressive schedule to, you know, keep on track and everything, so. Um, everybody's been working well together on that.
So as far as the the sloping of the east. Burned wall or the hillside, when were you guys gonna get that, or?
I've got Alex Davis coming back out today, uh, he was out last week, and we we looked at that some, uh. I think that we can maintain a three to one slope back there, um. I got a, Alex is gonna give me some control points that we can get to, uh, the excavator, get him out there and actually put eyes on it and and. See what we can come up with there, you know, there's some dirt that needs to be shifted around, I think more than. Hauled out or hauled in, I think, you know, it's just actually, you know, kinda tuning that hillside up and. I think we can actually just maintain a contour and come around there and create a swale down there. Uh, at the parking lot, you know, to to drain that water in both directions.
We've just been very fortunate with lack of water, for this, at some point, we're gonna run out of luck.
I know, I know.
Would it be more handy to get that doorwork done sooner?
I I wanna get it done as soon as possible, yeah, it's. Kind of, you know, John tossed around some different things, and. Uh, like I said, Alex was out last week, you know, we're kinda putting our heads together and, you know, see what we can do, so we need to get him out there and. Get that going, so, but.
Any other questions, concerns for Jeremy?
Yeah, I looked into the extended forecast, it looks like we might be out of the cold weather, I think, so. Hopefully, you know, don't get a bunch of rain and stuff, you know, in May. Yeah, they said eighties next week, so yeah, it's, yeah, turn your furnace on and turn your air conditioning, so, but.
Appreciate, anyone else? Thanks, Jeremy. Let's have a good day. Okay, am I, uh, where am I at here, we're at historic, Jackson County Historic Preservation Commission. Is there anyone here, are they out?
I think I saw my brother out there.
Is Don out there? Come on up.
I don't think so, mate.
Morning.
Morning.
We're ready for you.
Okay, while we're here, we are here.
Would you, would you kindly introduce yourself?
Oh, sorry, I'm Don Wentworth, this is Judy Kuhn. Uh, her husband Dave is back there, he came in with us, and we're here for the proclamation. That May is Cemetery Month, representing the Pioneer Cemetery Commission. And I think you should have a copy of her proclamation.
We do. Would you like it read?
Uh, yes, please.
Okay, so the proclamation states, it's Historic Preservation Month. I'm gonna get one of these, right? Uh, we have Cemetery Appreciation Month. Whereas, Jackson County residents are aware of the need to preserve and writ- the rich heritage. Contained in Jackson County's pioneer historical cemeteries, and whereas. This appreciation of their ancestors resting places develops a sense of pride in their ancestors. Accomplishments and in their communities, and whereas, pride and respect for our pioneers lead to the interest in the concern for. Lead to the interest in the concern for our future. It is with this thought in mind that we dedicate this month to the care of our pioneer cemeteries. Now therefore, I, Mike Stein, as Chairman of the Jackson County Board of Supervisors of Jackson County, Iowa. Do hereby proclaim the month of May twenty twenty-three as Cemetery Appreciation Month. And call upon the people of Jackson County, Iowa, to join your fellow citizens across the United States in recognizing and participating. In this special observance. And witness thereof, I have here on to subscribe my name to be fixed to the second day of May of twenty twenty-three.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second to proclaim. The month of May is proclamation for Historic. Cemetery Appreciation Month. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, nay?
We appreciate again the the Pioneer Cemetery Group and their their work that they they do with uh. I know the the pay is a little less than desired, but it. Disrespect again, like this says, for the for their ancestors and.
Well, it's twice what it was ten years ago, so.
Appreciate it very much.
Well, we appreciate your support. That means a lot to us. A lot of tuitions don't have support like we have, so.
We hear that at the state level also, so.
Yep, appreciate what you do.
And then I am here, you can just sit there. Um, for the um. May Historic Preservation Month as well. And I'm Chairman of the Jackson County Historic Preservation Commission, and we would like you to proclaim. Uh, Historic Preservation Month for Jackson County as well, who would?
All right, so this proclamation states Historic Preservation Month, whereas Historic Preservation is an effective tool for managing growth. And sustainable sustainable development, revitalizing neighborhoods. Fostering local pride and maintaining community character while enhancing livability and whereas. Historic Preservation is relevant for communities across the nation, both urban and renewal. For the Americans of all ages, all walks of life, and all ethnic backgrounds. And whereas. It is important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and contributions made by dedicated individuals. In helping to preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that has shaped us. As a people and whereas the Jackson County Historic Preservation Commission celebrates the national theme of. People, Savings, Places. Place savers who pour their time, energy, and resources into protecting places that care they care about. Often without recognition. In ways big and small, and inspiring others to do the same, to better educate. And involve the Jackson County community in its historic. History and historic preservation. Now and therefore, I, Mike Stein, as Jack, Chairman of the Jackson County Board of Supervisors of Jackson County. Do hereby proclaim May twenty twenty-three as Historic Preservation Month. And call upon the people of Jackson County, Iowa, to join their fellow citizens across the United States. And recognizing and participating in this special observance. Have a motion and a second to proclaim Historic Preservation Month. Month of May of twenty twenty-three. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, nay? Motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And again, we appreciate your support for our preservation finishing. Yeah, we appreciate everything you guys are doing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we've got Jeremy in, we've got uh Hawkeye in, we've got the Historic Preservation, we've got the Pioneer Cemetery. We're down to Brett Kilburn, Department Update. Good morning, Brett.
Morning, everyone. Basically, the purpose of my visit today is to. Uh, bring you guys up to speed on an incident that we had developing last Thursday. I don't know if you may have, you may have heard something out in the community or not, so I thought I'd come here and brief you on that. So uh, last week, the, from the shooting we had in Bolton, uh, last, I believe it was November. The grand jury met last week and on Thursday came out with an indictment for that, uh, recommending uh murder second degree to the county attorney. So with that, we had a uh, a situation that uh, we needed to prepare it as well and serve that warrant. Um, at a property that was gonna be kind of a tactical challenge. Um. With that, we we know from uh, the day of, uh, prior to that, that there was a cable, steel cable drawn across the driveway uh, to prevent our entrance onto the property. And throughout the day on Thursday, uh, we were getting intelligence reports that uh. The the personnel at the property were barricading the property with vehicles and big round bales of hay and things like that uh, to prevent our access. To them, um, later in the day. It could be heard and observed uh, target practicing with firearms in preparation uh, for us to show up. Um, we'd even gotten uh, intelligence from one neighbor that they'd taken up armed drag a herald that is about probably twenty-five feet wide. About five foot deep. It's got numerous rows of one-inch spikes, probably six to eight inches long. Uh, flipped over inside the driveway to basically take out any vehicles we tried to enter onto the property with. And it would also be uh, bad for personnel if, you know, we had to exit vehicles and things like that and try to maneuver through this. Um. They also called Channel Six and told them that uh. Basically, we were coming out there to get them and they were uh, preparing for us to arrive and I think their their intentions were to have the news crew show up and get all this. Kind of incited into being on the the news media. So. Anyway, um, with that, I wanted to thank all of our neighboring agencies that assisted us again. Uh, we had numerous resources from the State Patrol helping us out. We had for sure. One tactical team um, assembled in the area. There's two other teams that were uh, being prepped or put on notice and responding also. Uh, three hostage negotiators uh, had arrived. The state sent both of their up-armored tactical Bearcat vehicles because of the uh, location of this place that was gonna be difficult. To uh, approach. Um, they had a fixed wing airplane up in the air uh, for observation. And they probably had about fifty troopers from what I was told, uh, amassing a staging location in the county here, uh, which is probably about half the State Patrol. Uh, to go out and deal with this because, in the words of the state tactical team leader, he said they've never had anybody go to these great lengths to. Try to avoid being um, you know, detained or brought in, so. Um. DCI, uh, Special Agent, uh, heard of the traffic and he also responded to our location. Um, Jones County brought their and their. Their chief, their sheriff's office and EMA brought their uh, mobile command center over for us. And uh, they put their tactical team on standby to help with rotations, depending on how long this turned into a standoff. Uh, Clinton County also did the same, uh, made some contacts, put their team on standby. Even consulted with the US Marshals as far as uh, conducting surveillance, depending on how long this is incident would last. Um, and other other people like uh. The Iowa DNR uh, assisted and the Quick Star was actually willing to get us some subsistence, depending on how long this would run. And then our Jackson County EMA, of course, uh, responded with their drone and that's where we got the majority of our intelligence information from. And uh. As the people that day that we were assembling and uh, preparing for the worst. Um, even the State Patrol guy said that drone paid for itself just in this one incident, just in not only officer safety. But safety to the subject that we were trying to bring in and and any of the neighboring community in that area too, so. Uh, that was invaluable. So, so I just wanted to brief you guys on that, let you know what was going on, because you may have seen some extra State Patrol vehicles in the area that day and uh. That's what we were preparing for. And at the end of the day, um, uh, I I wanted to offer the subject, uh, the possibility, the opportunity. To come in, uh, turn themselves into the sheriff's office, rather than have law enforcement out at their location and have to go through this. A very dangerous situation. And fortunately, that's what uh, they finally agreed to at the end of the day and. And even our IT guy, Jordan Beck, was uh, helping out with stuff that day, uh, getting uh, resources around for us and things like that. Couple neighbors in the community were helping us out too. Um, so. So just wanted to keep your breast to that and tell you what was going on and uh, so you knew what 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 last week was about, so.
Appreciate it. Yeah, you hear stories, but we don't, you don't ever know what how much of theirs to, so we appreciate you. Letting us know what how things went fine and the help that you had, so.
Yeah, and just want to give praise and thanks to those agencies that come to our aid when we needed them and stuff and we do anything back for them.
We expect to do the same, yep.
Yeah, so.
Appreciate it.
Anyway, that's all I needed.
Thanks for, thanks for the. Update and the good work. All right, Lisa?
I need a motion to approve the minutes of the April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three board proceedings as written by Auditor Smith. An authorized publication in the official newspapers.
Second.
Motion second through the board minutes for April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three, as presented, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, nay? Motion carried.
Need a motion to accept, place on file and authorize the chair's signature on the county recorder's reported fees collected for the month of April twenty twenty-three in the amount of forty-two thousand. Eight hundred and thirty-one dollars and seventy-three cents.
So moved.
Okay.
I have a motion and a second to accept and place on file and authorize the chair's signature on the county recorder's fees. Collected for the month of April twenty twenty-three as presented. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, nay? Motion carried.
That's all I have for the board today.
Thank you. And the win. We're just moving along right now.
Making good time. Good morning.
Good morning.
Calendar for this week. Um, at eleven-thirty this morning is a work session with Human Resources. On EMS Needs Assessment, Policy Updates, and Personnel. And at three o'clock this afternoon is a Green Space Redevelopment Meeting at the library or by Zoom. Um, for any of you that want to attend that, I think Nin's been going to that. Um, Wednesday, May third at four PM is the Wednesdays are possible meeting in Preston for any of you that want to go to that. Six o'clock that night is a E nine-one-one Service Board meeting. Um, for Mike and Nin in here. And then at six-thirty, uh, we're having a work session on fireworks policy for the county. That's for any of you that want to come to that. Thursday, May fourth, from noon to seven, Mike has an Isaacs Retreat in Fort Dodge. Could have it on Friday too, but you're coming back on Friday, you said.
I have commitments on Friday.
Right, so. But on Friday at eleven o'clock is the Isaacs Weekly Legislative Update by Zoom for Mike, if he has time for that. Monday, May eighth, at four PM is Early Childhood Iowa's Budget Planning Meeting. Um, they don't have an executive meeting in the morning. Everything's at four o'clock. And that will be into it or by Zoom for Nin. Um, Tuesday, May ninth, at nine AM is our next regular meeting. And then after that, at four PM, um, is tentatively a McCoke the River Watershed Management Authority Executive Meeting by Zoom for Don. And at seven o'clock that night is a Board of Health Meeting um, for Nin. The only other business I have for you today. Um, is discussion, House election on the reappointment to the Board of Adjustment. Um, Darrell DeWor's term on that, our board is expiring on. On on, it's wearing on May sixth, so uh, he's willing to be reappointed, so I'm looking to reappoint him to that.
And how long a term?
Um. I believe, I have to look at. It looks like a five-year term, two thousand twenty-three to twenty-eight, so. Five-year term.
So moved.
A second thought.
I have a motion and a second to approve Darrell DeWor reappointment to the Board of Adjustment as presented. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, nay? Motion carried.
That's all I have for your.
Thank you. Um. Commission, Board and Recommission Report. Um, I didn't get to sit in on the IRs. Is there anything, any updates as far? I know they got a lot of the user agreements back. I think they're waiting on a few yet or?
Yeah, they're waiting on a few yet of them. Um, we did talk about having possibly, I believe, kind of before I attended these meetings, but they had a meeting with. Up there for anybody that was. That this pertained to, and they're talking about possibly maybe doing another one of them. I don't think we really set a date, but we talked about maybe like here in June and kind of being, this would be your last shot to. Having some agreements there and to get on hand and. They were going to get a tentative cost of if you don't. Do this now, what it would pain to.
Yeah, I mean, if they don't do it now, basically that's their expense, correct?
All their expense, which could be.
Well, I know she talked about sending a letter out and going make it, actually, during that, been knocking on a few doors, I heard too, so. Hopefully, they can get that, take care of people. Recognize the value of doing it now.
Yeah. Yeah, and that's, you know, they've, again, brought up like the leisure-like area and now some of them. Lots are being sold and they want to hook up and they're kind of thrown back by what the cost of hooking up is. Going to cost.
I did attend the EMS uh, meeting last Wednesday in Andrew and we discussed the um coordinator position again. And I agree, we'll be discussing that in the work session also, so. Had good discussion with them and uh. Talked about it, but we'll talk about that in our work session.
And I'm with uh, Aaron Erickson, the uh, Director of the. McCoke River Water Management Authority. We kind of had the lunch just to kind of get a better understanding of, for me anyway, of what's going on. Uh, as taking over as the chairman. And we can move forward and get a little bit more of a tangible result, so people can see more of what we're doing and. Trying to work out a support for what she's doing and what the what the board's doing as well, so that went pretty well. I think we should be able to see some. See some activity increasing here in the near future, so.
All good. Other than that, I don't have any other reports for the, we do have a work session scheduled uh, with Josh. And the city of McCokata, um, Public Works and our. Maintenance Supervisor also. And I believe. That's pretty much it for the agenda.
Well, that's during the meeting though, right?
Yeah.
So we can make a motion to support or do whatever.
Uh, yeah, I guess it's on the agenda to approve or not to approve.
Good.
Or to further discuss what we had. So are you in, huh? We will take a short recess.
Here's Frank Kilburn.
Yes. Manager and Frank Evans, our uh, McCoke the Public Work Director. And Marty, who look are Jackson County Maintenance Supervisor.
Good morning.
So which one are we talking about first?
Well, I like talking about the, let's talk about the cable first. Jayden had drew up a couple.
Uh-oh, he's, I'm not coming in here. Get my message though?
Stop.
Why, oh, it's, if early, you probably were on your way over here, so.
Are we talking about?
You put the ignore button.
Is Jayden available?
He's coming.
Okay.
I'm blocking the door for him.
So I asked last week, and I had told Jayden to take a look at this diagram and make sure that the. At least they have to be certain list and for two-way direction and. So if he had any option that they, or if the engineer department had any option. I don't know what he come up with. I haven't seen any.
So I came up with two options. One's utilizing perpendicular parking, which is your most efficient way parking. And another option is anyway, aisles with angled parking, which isn't, you end up. Losing spaces just because of the orientation of the skulls and the widths you need. Here's option one. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I drafted this based on assuming we're leaving all the existing entrances. As is or the same spot without doing any work there.
On my layout, I was going to make the entrance of Second Street wider.
Okay.
I don't know if you've seen my layout at all.
I did, I said, I didn't plan on making it wider.
Right, so.
Was that what that line represented?
That's what that line represents coming in for these, but.
So uh, we're losing three parking spots. So uh, we're losing three parking spots in our downtown as a result of the Platte Street reconfiguration of parking. Just looking at this from the beginning, I, I. Visually, I, I think that the diagonal is better, but I don't think the city can afford to, to lose more spots. And I much prefer option one, um. I do think about consistency. Across spots and I. Would maybe walk on unless Frank has some comments about why our property. Has diagonal slots in addition. As opposed to, to some of the county's property. Think you make them one of the same and hopefully we would gain. Few spots because you make them.
Is when you, when you do perpendicular, is there required uh, two-way traffic width different than there's? There sure is. So. Yeah, when you got two-way traffic, you require X amount of.
Yep, for, so ninety degree parking, which is perpendicular like option one showing. For two-way traffic, your aisle width needs to be twenty four foot wide. You go sixty degree angle parking. Which is what option two is a sixty degree angle because forty five is. Yeah, like forty five, I guess sixty's. Your, most of your angle parking is at sixty degrees. Uh, but for that, for two-way traffic, your aisle width need to be twenty five foot, ten inches, so almost twenty sixteen.
I'll let by me one more time, you're only talking a foot difference or?
Almost two foot difference.
Yeah, so. So ninety degree. Your aisle width is twenty four foot.
Which is perpendicular, right, they're talking ninety, okay.
Yep, so sixty degree angle, which is what my angle is showing as is twenty five foot, ten inches, so yeah, almost two feet. Wider than, for two-way traffic, now if you go down to one way. It's significantly less, your aisle width is. Uh, twenty foot, four inches.
For width for diagonal.
Correct, if it's only, if it's one way. I guess my question is, does this have to stay the same? I was, I left that the same because I just wasn't sure what, that can always be changed if you would like, I just wasn't sure what everybody's thoughts were.
My, my comment is right now. The city and the county in that small parking lot area, there's thirty nine total spots. What are we? With your two layouts, Jayden, are, are, are we gaining or losing from the thirty nine?
I have evaluated the parking. City and county's portion as a whole.
Yep.
And existing, there is ninety three stalls and out of those ninety three. Four of them are ADA stalls. Proposed on the perpendicular one were at ninety stalls with still having four ADA and the reason why for that is. I actually made. I didn't put any aisles here to allow traffic to flow through because right now, how it is, it's stalled through, so if you were to. Essentially, if you wanted to use this parking lot, you have to come through this entrance here. You know, I, I kind of connected it all.
In the, in the newer one, how many stones were?
With the angled one?
With the perpendicular.
Perpendicular, we're at ninety.
Ninety.
Then that's county and city as a whole.
It was ninety three, check.
Yeah, was that ninety three or did it possibly be at ninety?
So when the perpendicular, the angled one, how many?
Right. Going from ninety three to eighty one.
Um, that automatically goes up the, the angle parking.
And you might be able to gain some stalls if this gets reconfigured as perpendicular versus angled on the existing city side on the south and. You may gain some stalls by changing that to. Perpendicular.
Okay, and there's no value per se if we went all the way through with the perpendicular like. From, I'm talking from Platt all the way south across the whole, yeah. I mean. If you're going from here all the way down, instead of making these like, like Josh, I think you said, right, make these perpendicular, would these be perpendicular this way or this way then?
North, south.
I think it's north, south as long as they match.
You have to, you have to use the existing, your driveways.
Yeah, you, you want your driveways to be your average aisles.
Right.
When I. When I did my little. On. Can layout. I, um. I didn't see the need for like doing this, Jayden, because if you want to use this parking lot, you come in here and you come around. If you want to use. Like these aisles, you would come in this entryway, so. And I, I guess I didn't see the need to do that.
Okay, and that's fine, I just wasn't sure for parking lot circulation, but yeah, that's not safe, you didn't. You really. Same came in this parking lot and wanted to park up here, that's not safe, couldn't go up here and take that alley.
And then to get on that, right.
So. And yeah, so that would, you can, I probably still. Give some distance here to, but that would, you gain some stalls where that show.
The list all right here is handicap right now. The moment, isn't it?
Um, yes, this, this one isn't. Depending on how everything gets restripped, depending on what the grades are of that existing lot, if there's no, you know, repaving or reconstructing a portion of the parking lot. You have to put the ADA stalls where. The grades allows, you can't be any more than uh, two percent in any direction, so that's gonna.
If I kind of like the perpendicular parking, as long as you guys on the city side, can you match it? We might gain those three spots back, right?
Yeah. I mean, if we get rid of the.
I think you do immediately if you're, if you take that out, then you might get. One or two on each. Side of the cities change for these perpendiculars, I, I agree, I, I, I think that as long as Frank doesn't have any objections, that we meet the parking pullout standards for how. Wide or how much distance has to be there, you stay. The same as we're proposing to county, make it look consistent. Gain spots and that, that's, that's a common problem that I hear about just when you're doing parking because. Platte Street took away three, there's other things happening on the side of the street at this point, it, it sends the right message. Right now, take a look at how that fits with where the charging statement is, because you know, it's kind of protruding out into the stalls and. Just see how that.
Were you guys thinking of just repainting it or were you going to put a coat, uh?
We'd probably seal it first and then re-stripe it so it looks refreshed and. Well, we would have to, we would have to seal it for two reasons, once to, you know, keep it in good shape and then to cover up the old straight up.
So as far as coming to us, you're looking to see if it's okay if we can pull those poles out. And uh, pay for our portion.
Yep, so um. I think in our minds where we, whatever the square footage responsibility here is of the ceiling and then the painting, that would be your share in the cost. You know, removing the, the poles and putting the. Bill back in the asphalt and pressing it down when you're ready. We'll move forward on, on getting this done, however.
Yeah. Do you have an estimate on that?
No.
No. Um, how, is that just like a? An oil almost or just a, just a, okay.
It's like an emulsion.
A sealer of this. So we're not talking thickness, thickness that we don't rolling anything, we're.
No, no.
Raining and drying.
It'll come off like a distributor.
Right.
Sure.
Yeah. Marty, you have.
I'm sorry, are we still thinking about getting rid, getting good, getting rid of this?
Yeah, and I can redraft this up and send everybody an email with it attached and that way you guys can provide comments.
I don't know what we're talking about getting rid, I can't see what your point on.
There, this right here, the pass through right here.
Oh, yeah, okay.
And that would, then that would change this to ninety to ninety three.
And could you change those perpendicular, the, the diagonals to perpendicular too and see what that does to the total count for the parking lot?
Yep.
I think if we do that, guys, then we'll end up.
You probably end up gaining, gaining from what there is existing.
Right, right. And that's sort of the whole. We have this exercise.
We wouldn't have these anymore, correct, Jay? I, I'm just trying to follow. We wouldn't have the, the ones going this way.
Correct, because the existing ones you pull and hit, or even those bioturbo, those would all be doing.
Going this way.
Yep, and the plan is then to also change these to be perpendicular, so that we kind of match.
So your perpendicular parking spots basically in our, in our section would be. East and west, facing east and west, and you're talking on the south side yet, are they going to be north and south then?
It could be the same direction.
Same direction, they're all way to the north and south.
Okay.
So, except for your spots right off the second street.
Right here.
Move this edge on the.
On the second.
We're not using this one.
Maybe gains. Your stall is wrapped with it.
But that one loses like.
So I definitely take a look.
These become. These will match these.
Right, then they're, they're facing north and south.
Right.
Because, and these are facing.
West, oh, they're going way, okay. Too many lines almost the same color.
Yeah. Uh, it usually works best to have in type. With a shared access aisle because. With any, the ADA stuff, we need to have a side. And that, I guess, and that could be here, but. Usually looks how the, these spots you're facing north, this is my parking stuff, and also use that as, it can be a shared access aisle, he's getting this. Yeah, yeah, the barricade and that's a whole concern. If I'll be access aisle, I'd just be worried about. Uh, so this is. Those will be. No, but this was part of the. Your ins and outs are. I mean, yeah. Yep. And I know there's a lot of lines that don't, I wanted to show that it's underlying the existing, but where it's all fitting out to, oh, what's there?
No, when you're something about the.
Or make them a different color.
Yeah. Well, I would just take them out if we're all agreeable. You know, take them out, you know, just.
So what you're looking, you want us to pull those posts out and fill the holes? And once that's done, what's the timeframe for you guys to proceed with this, are you finance ready to go?
After July first.
After July first, then. You would just tell us our portion and we would.
Yeah.
Well, I think we want to know ahead of time what our portion is.
Well, I've got, Frank's got to come up with an estimate and then, you know, you have a square foot responsibility or acre adjustment here and then you guys come into a good cost figure.
I mean, you've had this done before, correct, is there a square footage type cost or?
It's usually like, like, I like the square footer, the square yard, depending on how they want to. They want to price it all, that'll be easier. You'll get a number.
Marty, questions, concerns, input?
I don't think it involves me at all if they're going to clean it. And I haven't, I don't have a copy of the layout, so I, I can't say anything on that.
I'm right here, Marty, you can remember the concrete of the lane.
Okay. But uh, as long as I don't have to clean.
Just give them the one we're talking about, don't give them both. I mean, this, I mean, it is.
A few years ago. Um. Excuse me. Um. Yeah, because if I don't have to clean it. I, I'm probably pretty good with it.
Who's, who's in charge of? I mean, I know we are, but is. Marty going to be the one pulling them poles or? County going to pull the poles?
I'm assuming we'd have to get a, an inverter or something from secondary roads to come in and see if they just slide out or.
How did he, looks like, was there a few that were pulled out recently, how?
Taking out maybe hit?
I think they, you look like they were rested out and they just. I'm not sure.
Are they filled with concrete? Inside or not? You guys never paid attention when I was really, I never.
I can find that out for you, get back to you.
Would you uh, take a look and see what your thoughts are about pulling them out or if you think you can make arrangements for that?
Cut them off?
To fill the concrete, cutting them off probably isn't going to be very easy.
That, that, well, that you'd want to patch them when you have some sort, yeah.
I'm sorry, yeah.
I would think it'll make it look nice, we're gonna.
Do we have a cold patch or no, uh, just a asphalt mix, we got asphalt mix in a bag?
The county does, yeah. I'm not a blacktop, maybe Frank could speak more on that. But to me, you'd have to fill them up, pack it good and. Maybe patch it, I don't know, because it's always going to settle, I would think. What are your thoughts, Frank?
I don't want to talk to Todd, he says if they just slide out, it'll be rather easy, but if it's a cement base underneath, it's going to make a.
A hole.
A hole, you know.
So, in that case, would it be an option to cut them off? I mean, the cement saw you could. But you're only going to get so far down though.
I'd say we, instead of referring it to Marty, I mean, I know this would probably almost be a secondary roads issue because. You pull those out straight up, even if you can just slide them out, you're going to, you don't have an end loader. You know, they could come in with the, the Bobcat or, you know, an end loader to throw a chain and try to just. Slide them out or. You know, and you guys have the, the patching materials. That's something you guys could look into.
Sure they can.
We also want to get back in our minds that if, depending on how these pull out. Having an asphalt item to basically cut. Cut, you know, cut a strip down there. If you were to look down the line of bollards. Cut so much asphalt, depending on how. Process goes of taking them out, if they start pulling out and starts ripping up pavement. I'd better keep in the back of mind too.
Well, yeah, we certainly have to reconsider if, if, yeah, we start pulling words up.
If. I mean, if this turns into a big project, then we'll have to.
Reconsider.
Get, get back together again. Because, because we do hot patching all the time. But.
You do your own or you?
They have a trailer. Yeah, we actually have a, have like, like a heated um. Dump truck on a trailer, and we do all our patching.
So if we were three feet wide or something and we'd have to cut it out, you could, we could make an agreement of some kind that you would do that or?
That would be an option, because you want to do like hot mix on this, you don't want to do cold patch on, on this.
Even the holes, if we just fill in the hole?
Holes you can fill up with man sand up to like three, four inches from the top, then you just put blacktop in the, in the top three, four inches.
Okay.
No, like, you don't want to put blacktop all the way down, but. You know, you want to put some sort of a granular, gran, great, granular product in there.
Or even.
Say, Jay, you guys do what you co, come up with and then if it looks different, talk to Frank and get back to us on what you think.
Okay. You know, once we get the layout kind of nailed down to. Depending on what, like I said, what the grade is, these ADA stalls may have to move first. Also assuming we're going to try to avoid any possible, you know, I know there's some stalls, ADA stalls out there now, I don't know if they're necessarily at the correct grade though either. You know, maybe they. They might have just been painted on there and with no thought of what the grade. Is because you can't have any more, any more than two percent in any direction, I mean, that's essentially pretty flat. So that. I'll just take a look. I just initially placed them there for now since they're the closest to the sidewalk and they can. Take the sidewalk to the new crossing. At Platte Street. Kind of the courthouse that way.
What's on the? You guys know the front side on Platte Street? From the parking lot to the sidewalk, is there a curb or is that flat?
On Platte Street?
On the Platte Street side.
There is, that is flat.
From the parking lot to the sidewalk?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's asphalt flush up to the back sidewalk.
Yeah.
So that'd be the thing too, I guess.
Put them over there.
You could.
No, we pray. Would you want any wheels? Since that is flat, the sidewalk, would you want any wheel stops or anything to stop cars? From going. Overhanging the sidewalk? Or do you just trust everybody to park where they're supposed to?
So, the, the plow, the plow guy might have input on that.
I, and the DOT, and we want to keep the DOT away from Platte Street.
I would recommend not putting any bumper stops up there.
Snow project, we're going to hate that because they will hit them.
Yeah, well. We do, we do that like trail right now ourselves and that would be a maintenance nightmare. And about, because ten, twelve years ago, we took all the bumper stops out of. The like city parking lot just for maintenance reasons, so I would say none of that.
Uh, we don't need to, I, I'm not.
I mean, I kept it. I, so, I know there's a lot of lines here, this gray line here is the back of sidewalk. The next one down is where the joint to match in from your Platte Street project is, that's kind of where I lined up my edge of parking stall and those stalls are twenty foot deep, which is two foot. Deeper than what they truly need to be, so. Long story short, I tried, I tried to keep enough buffer between our parking and the sidewalk, I mean, that's probably. Five foot or so buffer from the edge of our parking stall to the sidewalk, so.
And, and we, and if we paint that line. Hopefully, if people can guess where that line is when they're pulling in and their bumper won't be over that.
Well, otherwise our police departments can't have to write the sidewalk clearance citations they need to, because we have to keep our trail clear.
Well, five foot seems to be plenty of.
I want to be plenty concerned. I wanna be plenty concerned, I wanna give. The joint line is kind of a nice reference line too, cause they're. A transformer with bollards right there too, so it kinda, it works well right where it's at. But I assume bollards and wheel stops, yeah, they're a maintenance nightmare, while they do keep people from parking where they're not supposed to, it's. But with the, the buffer we have, I guess it should be. But no, but I just wanted to bring that up.
Okay, um, so. We're not, are we here to take any action? Not really, we're, until we see the final. Go, I mean, I think we're both all in agreement with what we're trying to do here.
I'll work up a price for steel coating.
That'd be great.
And then hopefully, the bollards come out. Easy. And if not, then we'll have to come back. Jay and I'll get together, then we'll come back and re like visit. If we have to do a lot of.
Cause that way we know if those poles can come out easy or what we need to do for that.
What kind of timeframe are you thinking you might bill a tax something like that, Jayden? You know it all?
As far as the bollards or the restriping or both, or like the, a revised layout? Bollards, I can. Look at it with Todd this afternoon. See what, first look at them, I guess, and see if they're filled with concrete, cause if they're filled with concrete, that may. Don't they be on a concrete base yet or not?
I think they're.
They're gonna be.
I think they're full of concrete, ain't they?
They usually are.
They're, they're full.
I think they are because they used to have a chain on top and I think the. It had a loop to hold the chain on top of it. Yeah, so you couldn't drive through it or walk through it, but somebody, I don't know who took the chain down, but the chain is gone. But the, you can see on the top where it was at.
I'd like to think if they're filled with concrete, they likely are not on a base.
No, I wouldn't, I wouldn't think so either.
So they should. We would like to think that if they're just filled with concrete and no base, they should.
Well, they could, they could dig a hole, put the bollard in and then fill concrete around the base.
The couple that are missing.
Yeah, I guess.
Around them don't look all tore up.
That's why I wonder who took those out, or how did those come out?
Had to be the bank, right? I mean, they owned it, right? Or they?
I think they just came up missing as things kept.
They probably rusted off. Probably what they did. Cause there isn't a hole there, is there?
But if they, they wouldn't rust up, they're full of concrete.
No, that's just a shell.
Well, if they must it off, then if they bumped them, they would.
Well, you could tell if they were broke off.
I can easily go check that here and here, but I'm just curious, I guess, how they came up. If they were in the pit right up and I don't see why the rest of them.
Right.
Backed over over time of people hitting them. You see.
Even if they're filled with concrete?
I, I don't think they break off this year off that.
The biggest thing is.
Same repeated hitting.
The biggest thing is, once we start pulling those out, it's gonna create a lot of confusion in that parking lot as far as people driving and parking. So this project would probably need to proceed. Rapidly after those are out to get it covered. And then restriped, so there's more continuity in the parking.
Unless we set up some barricades or something along there.
Yeah.
Get it going.
Well, we'll see how easy they come out first, so.
You guys usually. Yeah, I mean Frank, I was trying and loaded, Frank, you know. You know, we said that we'd take care of the maintenance in terms of snow and these things and, and I largely told Frank to do that, whether he liked it or not, I'm sure. But I come to find out, I don't know how much time he spent on pushing four rows, but I, I don't think it was too hard for him to do since we were doing eighty percent of the lot anyway. So.
That. I mean, I mean, this is actually my, uh, rope, strictly less than half hour, so.
The whole project, or the whole project?
No, it looked like just this part right here.
Really?
Because you had to work around the poles and stuff. It was just a pain, that's all.
Yeah, there's always cars parked in there too, you gotta work around when you stop.
So, there is a hydrant there also, do we need to be concerned about or do we need to?
Hydrant.
Oh, and the flower base over there.
Right there, close to that handicap painting.
You have your layout, Jayden. Yeah, it's, I think it's right in the middle there.
Okay. So yeah, I guess, was, were those little islands bump outs gonna stay in place?
Flower pot is there because of the hydrant.
Yeah.
Right. The hydrant's in the middle of it, it's changing.
And that's fine, cause I assume that, I just. With this light, I assume that's all staying in, in place or as it is.
And we've been told there's no shut off to that hydrant.
So you don't wanna hit it?
Back in the good old days, that's probably true. Probably just tapped them in and ran it over.
There is a meter on it though.
In that manhole or what?
Yeah, in the manhole. Well, then, there's no. I had, uh. No. The, the water guy. I had Jeff look at it and he said there's a meter down in there, but there is no valve to shut it off. Is what he told me. And then I had Joel Wood look at it, he seconded that. That there is a meter, but no shut off valve.
I'll ask, can you cut it off and plug it?
Well, you could probably breathe it. But according to Jeff, you have to, if you're gonna do that, you gotta plug it at the main.
If.
Is what he told me.
If you guys wanna get rid of that. Hydrant, Marty is correct, prefer like city code, you gotta go out in the street and. Man disconnected.
They usually have.
Hydrant, before the courthouse, right? There's a fire, but there's.
He can go over and get a drink. I just wanted you to know that the. Month I left there. They told me that directly.
But she said, he said they do.
They, they told me they. I just told you, they told, I was at Gassers and the. The city guy was helping load up some stuff there and they turned around and talked to me, said they, you. If it's all possible, they'd like to leave that there, cause they use it. But there was two of them, they both agreed to it.
Well, I'm not in big favor of digging up the street and finding the main.
I'm not either, but it's also leaning.
At some point.
A little worried about somebody hitting it again and now it's broke off.
Well. We don't wanna penetrate the street up, so it's a moot point. I say we proceed as directed right now. We do the, the map. Figure what it takes to get those barriers out. You guys get a quote, we come together, put the final stamp on it, we're good to go.
I'll let it plan, I'll revise this and send. Perpendicularly, I'll shut off the distance across, so we'll see what's going on and I'll send that. Sounds good, thank you.
Done it to Marty also?
We probably could bolt a couple. Hosed on the, in front of the water hydrant.
Heard there's some barriers can be pulled out of the.
Recycle.
There you go.
Are we ready to move on to the softball field?
So the proposal was. Was that your proposal Frank or whose proposal?
When we talked, I was just. It all started, there's people using their like ATVs, TVs, whatever, they're like jumping those. Telephone poles, power poles that are laying flat on the ground. So, um. This has been going on for about a year. Lisa actually talked to me a while back about it and. We added some more power poles, but they keep jumping them, so the bottom line is. The only way to solve that is to. Build some sort of fence and the easiest fence. Just run a cable through the bollards that are, that are, that are there right now. And. And to, uh. Again, do a joint project. You guys provide the raw materials, we'll like drill the holes and. And put, and put the cable in.
Well, the raw materials, you, you told, when you talked, it was the cable.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Use the poles.
Yep.
And. For you and Jayden and Todd, we got, we got three quarter inch cable available, one piece.
There's about six hundred feet of three quarter inch cable guard rail that we have. Can be used.
We need exactly three hundred feet. Well, we probably need more when we have to make the connections and, you know, slap it back.
Found a spool down at the shop, sounds like the spool is like a wooden spool, it's in. That shape, so it might, some of it might come unwound when moved, but. We do have cable guard. So, this is off of Cathy Drive?
Yeah, correct, okay. That's your parking lot behind the.
Allowed access to the parking lot, but on the square.
That's so, that's, you got a picture?
Yeah.
Yeah. Boom, boom.
You don't think they're gonna take the telephone poles and put them up against the cables and make a bigger jump?
Well, actually, this, actually this time they got out, moved the pole and then drove through it. The last time. Couple weeks ago.
I thought Frank was gonna use the poles to make the post, put the cables through.
Well, the poles are already there, so. But like vertical.
The vertical.
So the, the telephone poles at, at that point could be probably taken away.
Right, and we would take the.
So they wouldn't have anything to lean up against them and make a ramp. Unless they brought their own.
Does, uh, does the city have, um. Cameras?
No.
Surveillance?
Whether it's your agency or ours, I mean, we used, you, in, in Decal P G, we used to use Gear Cam. Like if there's. Have big cars or, or dollars of these things, but one of the options was just kinda having like infrared Gear Cam. Available and those aren't all that expensive to try to just check up on. But. I, you know, I guess I, my mind one second ago was thinking about the together you build project over there if, if that's. In a parking for. That area to be served or what's? Is this Cathy Drive access, long term plan for it, would? We always gonna have this problem? I mean, I, I, I tend to believe that somehow. Someone will figure out a way to break this, whether it's by their own personal grinder or whatever.
Yeah, um, yeah, I, I don't. I would, you know, I guess I don't know what their purpose is, it just, is it save the timer just for fun or what, what they?
Just for fun.
Yeah.
I would say.
Really? Excuse me, so at that point, I guess I would think that we have to put some type of surveillance up just to see if it's. One or two or three or four, it can't be twenty, twenty different individuals.
My misunderstanding was, I was thinking it was auto vehicles driving through there to get to Flat. Which is kinda what Marty presented. Now you're saying four wheelers. If we only do boom and boom, they can still get between our guard rail and the dugout. To get out there for quote, quote, four wheelers.
They actually like going, as they come into that parking lot, they hang an immediate lift. And go along the chain link fence, isn't that right, Marty?
The first one they drove straight through and went south where the secondary roads put the sign up for me, that's where they went through original, so then we put the sign up there. Then they went two poles over and started going through there, then last one is in the southeast corner. Is where they got out, moved the pole and then drove through. Three or four years ago, they had a beaten path. From there down alongside the. Haycap building. It, it was making a path and then I took the cable that was around the haycap. I did what I could do with it, put it up and then it kind, then they went, started going between the. Senior citizen building and the haycap building, driving that way. And it's a vehicle, cause it's, it's big wide. Tracks, it is a four wheeler tracks, it's a vehicle track.
So I think, actually we're agreeable to do this also and try and see what happens here and if, if they keep pursuing it, we're gonna have to. Either get law enforcement involved or.
The whole point of this is to get down to Flat Street.
That's all we can come up with, versus going, because that area you gotta go over and get on, what is it, Walnut or whatever? To come on down, so this way they can just shoot through there and.
And I'm sure probably just one individual, but who it is, I don't know.
Right. Cathy Drive subdivision, they have to come all the way out to grow.
So.
And come down.
Do you guys wanna go pick up the cable or do you wanna drop off or how do you wanna do it?
I can work that out with Roger when we're ready.
Okay.
Oh, that's okay.
Appreciate it. Yeah, he's. Better you guys working together than. You've got coordinated asshole danger together than we can. We have, yeah, we have a situation that we were talking about the lights.
Situation doesn't sound good.
Are you guys putting what? What bulbs, the LED bulb, are you guys putting, are you doing like the hundred watt or the three hundred watt or?
Chris has those already, it's what was taken off.
I think, I think those were. The, like you called one to three hundred.
Yeah.
If I'm not mistaken.
Right. This, like what's on East, right, East some.
Yeah.
How many of the extra ones do you got? Cause I was just trying to figure out.
You know, well, I, well, I can only have thirteen for sure.
Really?
Or twelve.
Oh, that's what I'm getting.
Um, as to how many, I'll have to talk to, uh, Matt or. What that, matter, Chris.
Okay, so this is basically purchasing the extension arms or the. Suspension arm or whatever.
The pole and the. The galvanized pole, the arms, they kinda do it, boring, labor.
And the poles are all gonna be on the east side of it? All the way down to, okay?
Correct.
And Todd didn't know for sure, but he thought there was a bank, was there a bank there that some poles might have to be taller or something?
Or the FS.
Right, yeah, past the FS, old, the FS station there?
Will the pole be on, where the trail is, will the pole be on the FS side? Cause there's a pretty steep bank there, right?
I, you know, I don't know that Chris or Matt have ever mentioned that particular problem, so we'll take a look at it.
There was.
Cause you can't put it at the base of the hill, because that's the drainage area, that's the drains.
On the part of the trail. North of the bridge is gonna be two feet off the trail. Off of the concrete. And.
In the ditch. So to speak.
On the ditch. Two feet.
Right.
Out from the.
I'm talking about the south side where like that FS, FS is. There's a pretty steep, almost I don't wanna push it, push mode kind of bank. Is that pole gonna be in that bank somewhere?
Our, my original thought was it'll be sort of the same way, a couple feet off the shoulder. Not, not down in the bottom of the ditch.
I know what you're saying, they're pretty.
There ain't much of a ditch.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, it's a rep, you know.
They were heavily involved in the planning of this, you know, from the beginning and I. Sure would hope that they would be able to observe what you're talking about.
Okay.
I don't know if that's satisfactory enough answer, but.
Yeah, I will, it was just, even things that got brought up and, uh, questioned and we didn't, Todd didn't have an answer and, and. If, if there's something that we're concerned about, I, I'm not that familiar with this to even. Comment on it.
Believe the poles going in the ground six feet. So when they're off the trail or up on the hill, there's some substantial foundation they have to put in for them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that enough for erosion?
Okay.
Well, I don't, yeah, I don't expect that much erosion there, I mean, it never has, it's drainage, but it's not erosion.
We're talking about drainage, are they gonna come re. Foam. The drainage of that north side of the. By the campground, that's kinda like a long.
Well, there's an issue with that. The culverts coming out of bullocks.
Yeah. It's almost full.
They were. Full of silt, so in this project, we had them uncovered, get all the silt out of there. So now, instead of having pitch. From. The half to three quarter full culverts. Now the culverts are lower, the outfall, the culverts are lowered. So, we're working and trying to figure out. What we can do basically.
Dig a ditch out.
Right.
Out being below the.
But if we start digging the ditch out, up by the outfalls of the culverts. Then we're gonna run out of pitch, we can get down to the creek. It, I mean, you see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So.
You, you dig the cricket. Feedback.
Right.
We think that the city should just take that all on city limits, they got a horseshoe around everything around it, we don't have. Still wanted sixty percent of that bridge.
Now, now I'm gonna, I wanted to take that.
Have to have that conversation for a hundred more years.
Though I don't think we're fine with Tony and Eve.
It's funny, when I was mayor, I didn't want nothing to do with taking over that bridge, but now I think it's great.
The temporary sub pump work every time that ditch gets full?[1797.44]
I suppose anything will work.
You know, I mean, even, would a directional bore somewhere go somewhere, where could you go with it?
Well. Down to the actual, down to the actual.
Right.
I gotta say that, yeah.
Anything else that we need to discuss?
I don't think. Technically in the meeting, can we go back and approve that twenty eight E agreement?
I, I think we certainly can.
Ah, yeah, what's, what would be the procedure, I guess you can rescind your. Motion. Correct?
I moved to rescind the motion to table the twenty eight E agreement with the city regarding the poles on South Main Trail. You got a problem with it, Jay?
I haven't even seen it.
If we're gonna do this, I think Todd should be in here.
Have I resected project business on this, where, you know, I told Todd and emailed her, one thirty and one forty. Yeah, it's out in the world. So.
This is what I mean, do a live.
Yeah. Yeah, we, we really, yeah, we, um. With our purchasing policy and bidding and these things, there's kinda some gray areas, we kinda felt most comfortable just testing them out, making sure we're getting a good deal and.
I guess we just want them to be aware.
It wasn't that bad.
No, the, you answer all the questions, do you would?
So.
Yeah, I just found that in my notes from city stock, yeah, we're not paying for those. That includes the cost of the pole and the mast arms as well.
Yeah.
And assuming, I didn't know if they were, so obviously the lights will be like what you see around the city evidently.
Correct. Well, most of our lights are on the city of wood, these are galvanized.
Well, I mean, the fixture itself.
Yes. Yeah, they took them from the Flat Street job and this is what's in stock from that.
And they're plenty bright, like I said, if you get, anytime you're driving, I go on East Summit.
Base in West.
Okay, and where are you gonna put the bases, like at the toe of the back slope?
The bases are gonna, we just discussed that, they're gonna go like two feet off the. Concrete of the trail. On the north side, on the south side, two feet off the shoulder.
Okay, so when you say off. So from the trail, you mean to the east?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, right, right, okay.
Right.
Rescind us tabling it. So we can proceed with the, with the twenty eight E agreement. Are you cool with that?
Did you answer the question about how we're gonna do the billing on the energy? No, we did not, uh, MMEU would prefer. Not setting up a new meter that would involve some sort of small. Revenue shared to the city in some way to pick up the cost. Otherwise, we can just divide it out, I know according to Todd, you guys don't have. An MMEU accountant, correct? So I would just assume just, like an annual payment, like some kind of prorated amount per, per. Per light, what it is per year per light and make that payment each year.
So we know what the wattage is, we can almost estimate what that's gonna burn and.
Well, like you guys have those poles, you should be able to figure out how much one pole costs, I mean. But granted, you guys have your.
Are they on for a set amount of time every day?
Sunset.
Yeah, they're on a, four or so, but. So. Changes as. You know, seasons.
Are you happy with item nine on that, that where it says the city and county will usually agree to pay for any future maintenance and energy costs associated with this?
We would pay for our energy costs of our six.
Cause that language is flexible enough for what we're discussing here.
Pretty flexible to say that.
Okay.
He just said, okay.
No, they're just saying that you guys are gonna pay for it, so how do we figure out what the, sure, the justified billing is, I'm comfortable with that. But I don't, I don't wanna have our own meter, I don't wanna have our own account, so we'll just have to figure that out.
Okay.
Well, I would certainly hope that it's not something we need to argue about, that minimal, sounds minimal to me, um. But again, we have to come up with an agreement, so right now I have a motion on the table to rescind. The tabling.
Tabling of it.
I will second that.
A motion of second to rescind the motion for tabling of the twenty eight E agreement. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay. Motion carried.
Make the motion to go ahead and enter into the twenty eight E agreement with the city for the lights.
I'll second that.
I have a motion of second to, uh, approve the twenty eight E agreement with the city of Macogut for lighting as presented. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, nay. Motion carried. Any other discussion? Needs? Concerns?
Or motion to adjourn.
Okay.
The motion is second to adjourn, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay. Motion carried.